Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco's Channel 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poploski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, February 16th. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in participating. However, for future meetings, if anyone is interested in participating, they should contact the chairperson prior to the beginning of the next meeting. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. A couple of things. Yesterday was an early release day for students. It was a full workday for our staff, and it was, based on the feedback I've received, a very successful professional development day. Educators across pre-K through grade 12 had a variety of things they were working on. There were a couple of courses that educators can work on individually and with colleagues focused on some strategic priorities that the school district has. One of those is advancing people's understanding of universal design for learning in order to improve our inclusive practices. Another is a course titled "How to Become a More Equitable Educator", which focuses on issues of diversity and equity, and research and information related to those. We had some departments that are working on very specific initiatives. You may recall that there was a presentation a couple of meetings ago where Mr. Ken Almeida, who's the Director of World Languages, talked about the initiative around the seal of biliteracy. There's some work that's happening in terms of that and also some of the work that the changes that have been made at the state level in terms of curriculum frameworks for world languages. So a variety of things went very well. I appreciated the work that was put into it, particularly Amy Clodder, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, in terms of planning. But for all the educators and leaders who were involved, I think it was a successful afternoon, and those are very valuable time periods for us to be able to provide professional development and capacity building for our staff. In addition to that, I wanted to mention that we are underway with our search for the next principal of Oak Middle School. Dr. Anne Jones, a couple of months ago, announced her retirement at the end of the school year, and we have had a successful process so far. Although, as anyone who's in any sector trying to do hiring right now, it is a challenging environment to be hiring. So the pool of candidates was not as numerous as it would be in typical times. That said, we were able to identify through the process three finalists who we are excited to learn more about. They are Liz Garden, who is currently the Principal of Mayo Elementary School in Holden. She actually made a site visit to the Oak today. Tomorrow, Hallie Burak, who is an Assistant Superintendent at the Public Middle School in Stoughton, Massachusetts, will be visiting Oak. And then on Monday, Elizabeth York, who is currently the Principal of the High School, David Prowdy High School, which is in the Spencer East Brookfield District, west of Worcester, will be coming to visit on Monday. We'll be putting this out in writing to everyone, but just want to let people know that there is a public forum next Tuesday evening, February 8th, at Oak Middle School in the auditorium, where each of the three finalists will be able to make a brief presentation and then take questions. So any parents or community members or staff who are interested in coming on Tuesday evening, February 8th, at 6:00 PM at Oak to interact with those three finalists as part of the process. Beyond that, you know, we will make site visits to finalists' own schools to learn more about them. And ultimately, as under Massachusetts law, the superintendent appoints principals. I'll make a decision based on all the feedback and experiences we've had to that point. So we're excited that that's moving forward, and again, invite people to come to the public forum next Tuesday evening if they're interested. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great. Thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Moving on to our next item on our agenda, which is a timed scheduled appointment. It is a student spotlight from Shrewsbury High School. Just to provide some background, to provide information to the school committee and public regarding ways in which our students are learning and acting in ways that connect with our district's core values during the school year. We've been spotlighting various practices happening in different schools. Tonight's meeting will include students from Shrewsbury High School, and here to present with them is Principal Todd Bizidlow and the Director of Visual Arts, Ms. Pam LeBlanc. Have the students introduce themselves as well.
Yeah. Dr. Sawyer, from the school committee. Thank you for having us. Pam LeBlanc, as I mentioned, Director of Visual Arts.
I'm Emily Diamond, and I'm a senior at the high school.
I'm Anya Puro, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ally Arupino, and I'm a sophomore.
Todd Bizidlow, Principal. Thanks for having us tonight to showcase some of the talents that we have and some of the program we have at the high school. So we'll turn it over to Mrs. LeBlanc and these three fine young ladies, who are going to describe some of the work they're doing at the high school.
Sure. So I'll just speak on behalf of the digital and/or traditional and digital photography course that's taught by Christine Cobb and Sarah Williams. It is a true co-taught class in which there are 16 students, in which the teachers meet with all 16 at the same time, and have the opportunity to bring the students to both the darkroom as well as the digital lab. So this is just our program of studies, and I just have it up there for people that want to learn a little bit more. But it's a combination of both darkroom photography as well as the digital. We don't use digital cameras as much per se. However, the students use their phones, and they use the iPads as well when they are in the digital lab. But it's a matter of trying to bring in some of the techniques that students learn in the traditional setting and how they can manipulate it through the use of a computer. So some of the objectives that the teachers have shared with me focus on when it's a combined class, and the development for the students to look a little bit more closely and develop the eye for shooting your photography pieces. So whether that be the setup of the piece or the lighting, or even the objects that they choose is something that they focus in both of the classes on. They learn a little bit more about composition, and they work collaboratively with their peers. What I see as an outsider walking by is they're always in groups, doing something together. So that's really nice to see. Whether it be traditional photography, it is just the darkroom skills of analog photography. So it's the process of developing the negatives and developing their images. And whether it's brought to the photo lab, we actually have students take their negatives and scan them into the computer so they can digitally manipulate both images. So you'll see some of their work. It's a little combination of two negatives put together. Thinking in terms of the traditional, some of the things that they might learn are dodging and burning, which is something different. Those of you that know photography, it's usually done in the darkroom. But with the computer, they can actually enhance their pieces just the same. So whether or not they've explored that, they might talk about it tonight. So here are a couple of pieces that were recognized at the Anna Maria College Art Competition just recently in January. I think the image on the right is a double exposure. So here are some images of them working as a team. The students can talk about that a little bit. And then I'll pass it over to Ally.
So again, I'm Ally. I wanted to take this class because I really like photography, and I just didn't know a lot about it. One thing I really liked about this class is that it was like a cool combination of modern and traditional photography. It was like a cool mix of both. Got a little bit of both at the same time. I also didn't realize how many different types of photography there were until I took this class. I just thought it was like a just really just small thing. And I also, some of the things that we did, we had to go really like old-fashioned with it. Like, we got to go outside, use the sun, like, and I didn't realize how much of a process it was. It kind of gave me perspective about what it was like back then for them. And then I also learned that like the smallest of objects, like as easy as like a glass ball can make such a cool picture. And in the middle picture is I used Photoshop, and I got to learn how to like crop things out and just make cool images like that. So yeah.
I decided to take this class for a few reasons. During the first semester of my sophomore year, I took another Photoshop class, which was my first introduction to the subject, and I really enjoyed that. So I thought taking another class with Photoshop in it would be very fun. And I also love taking pictures on my own, and I thought it would be cool to learn how to do this in a different way using the darkroom, something that I've never done before. One of my favorite aspects of the class was how we did one project with Photoshop, and then we did the same project in the darkroom. So it showed two different aspects of the same project. In the pictures, you can see the top blue cyanotype was done on Photoshop, and the bottom one was done on actual paper using sunlight and different chemicals to make it show up on the paper. I found it very interesting how you could use two completely different methods and make the same product. I also liked learning about more aspects of Photoshop that I didn't learn in my first class. Like, in the mandala, we learned how to use symmetry to make the exact same parts in each section. And I also liked this project because I got to use a lot of my own pictures that I took. And overall, just using Photoshop and the darkroom, I just learned so much more about something that I thought I could just shoot on my phone.
So again, my name is Anya, and I really enjoyed, I really enjoy photography on my own. So I really enjoyed this class, and I would definitely recommend it to anyone who's thinking of taking it. And we worked with photos in many different ways. We used the cameras on our iPads and on our phones. And we went into the computer lab and worked in Photoshop as well as having physical cameras with black and white film that we later developed in the darkroom. And I especially loved being in the darkroom because I liked to see my photographs come to life. And I learned many different techniques for photography, such as the different angles and the shadows that we can include. And in the darkroom, I learned a lot about Photoshop and how to layer pictures, crop pictures, use different shadows and colors. And in the darkroom, I learned how to develop film and dodge and burn, like this was mentioned earlier. And I really enjoyed this class, once again. And so my left picture, this was when we were able to bring our cameras home for the first time, and it was around Halloween. So I decided to take a picture of the pumpkins on my front step. And I really liked this picture because it's simple, yet it's simple, but I also liked the colors and the angle. And the second picture is one that I took with my phone. And we were given a glass orb and told to go be creative and find interesting composition. And so I set the glass orb on the floor of the hallway, and I really like how this one turned out and the way that it reflects the hallway. And this class has really made me think about taking further photography classes and art classes in the future.
Yeah, we'll be, from my perspective, and I don't know, Ms. LeBlanc, we haven't really talked about this, but generally, this is a course that we brought together. We had traditional darkroom photography. We had digital photography. We brought both together to work with two teachers. I believe it was approved by the school committee two years ago. This is our second year of offering this. It's a very, very popular elective. I think as you hear from the students here that they work together in teams. There are often, today at lunchtime, we had teams of two from the photography lab working on stills throughout the school, trying to capture those pictures. What I think is really neat that people in the community might not know is we actually have working, old-school, old-fashioned, someone said, darkroom, and looking at exposures and working in different techniques and modalities. So for our students in terms of hands-on, experiential learning, this is absolutely, for me, it's an absolutely great opportunity for our students to do something different rather than taking it, snapping it with their iPhone or Android or iPad and taking a picture, but able to take two of those mediums and combine them together and learn new schools, new techniques, but also using those two things and working together to bring the traditional and the modern photography together. So it really is a really neat course. And if you ever have the opportunity to come to the high school, we'd be happy to show you up in the darkroom and show you what goes on up there. We'd be happy to take any questions from the committee, sure.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. That was great. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Mr. Palich.
First of all, I just want to say this is all very impressive to me as someone whose photographic knowledge is non-existent beyond Instagram filters. What is dodge and burn, this concept? You guys have referenced it a couple of times.
So dodging and burning means that if you take a picture and one part of it is either too light or too dark, and the other parts look fine, then you can move your hand over it, and it will allow the other parts of the picture to get darker while keeping the part that was covered the same.
Gotcha. Fascinating. Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Chris?
Thank you all for presenting. I always find it fascinating to see some of the classes that we offer for students that might not be traditional, you know, math, science. And I think sometimes, I know my own children sometimes got more out of it because something they had never studied before, and they were really like interested in it, and it was a great opportunity. So I'm so glad that we're able to continue to do these things. And I don't know if Ms. LeBlanc has even notified the students yet, but just for the Shrewsbury Education Foundation, with Ms. Cobb and Ms. Williams, we're just awarded a grant for more funding for this particular class. And John and I both are on this nonprofit. So it was so funny. We had just done the grant proposal review, and one of the things we talked about, because we're all old, was, you know, traditional cameras. Like, you travel, you don't see people with, like, we used to have a bag with cameras and lenses. And everybody's, they're iPhones now. So it's great to see that this is still being used, and it's a passion for people. So I just love when we have the students come in, and it's great to hear what you're doing besides the other courses that we have to have.
Yeah, this is terrific. My only question is, very often when you learn software, it's great while you're in there doing it. And, you know, come back a month or two later, and a lot of it's gone. Do you have the software on your home computer as well, or do you have to use it just in school?
Only in the digital lab. But can't you log in?
You probably can.
Yeah, I think you can just log in on your computer to your school account, and then you can access it all. Wait. No, wait. No, I'm so wrong about that.
If you wanted to use Photoshop at home, you would have to pay for it.
Yeah, purchase your own.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you have to use the same computer in the computer lab, so yeah.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Ms. Heaven, on you.
Yeah, I really appreciate hearing from Allie. I want to thank your parents for being here who were able to join us tonight. When I was an undergrad at Holy Cross, I spent a lot of time in the darkroom there, and I very fondly remember watching my pictures come to life, as one of you said, and that sort of like, that experience. My question is maybe more for Ms. LeBlanc. Do you, I'm wondering about, I love when we hear that courses are really popular, but automatically thinks like, how many kids want to get in and can't get in, and capacity? And obviously, you have a physical space and computer lab space. And so talk to, and we know that the spacious is at the high school. But talk to me a little bit about how many kids are seeking this opportunity. Clearly, you have a lot of, you've sparked a lot of enthusiasm, and how, what do we need to know in terms of where the interest lies for our student body?
Sure. So this is the second year that we are running this course. Last year, both teachers taught simultaneously. However, the cap is 16 because of the shared cameras. That's probably where, that's really where some of the, you know, where the constraints come in. Because we have X number of cameras. Students share them, usually two per, one per two students that share them. And they had 16 in a class. So really, the two teachers last year saw 32 students at once, and it was just, it was very hard to manage. You couldn't pull them together at any, especially with the pandemic, at a point in time. So this year, it's solely kept at 16. And we have served all students that signed up for it. As it continues to grow, that's when the need's going to be. What do we do, and how do we make those adjustments? But I also think by pulling in the digital component to it, we have that flexibility a little bit more. So even though cameras are harder to come by, and they're more costly because they are 35 millimeter, the teachers are being really creative on how they can still give the exposure. I think you even used a pinhole camera at the very beginning, did you not? Maybe you didn't. Pinhole cameras, they even talked about at one point, just to get the students familiar with photography. So, you know, we haven't really turned any students away, which is a good thing. And I can just foresee it growing larger and with the support of SEF and with the support of the teachers being super creative and bringing in the modern technology, as you can see with their cellphones up there. There's ways that we're going to make it work for our students and still give them some really great experiences.
Okay, just one follow-up question. What is happening with the neon lights? Like, what's going on there?
So that, we basically just put like this kind of.
Film, colored film.
It was, it's a colored film, and then we taped it on the back flash camera. And then so we turned the flashlight on, on our phone, turned the lights off, and then like we all had like something to draw. And then we propped up the camera so that it was facing all of us. And then we kind of just made those designs with it, and you just like go back and forth with your phone.
It's a very long exposure. Yes, to capture it.
Thank you for being here. Thanks, Billy.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for the presentation. Very well presented. I really appreciate the creativity behind this class. Obviously teaches you more, you know, that there's more to photography than just a smartphone. Really gives you that deep dive into the process and the applications behind it. And also, you know, could potentially, down the road, you know, you open up future interests in, you know, career paths in design, you know, graphic design or photography. I know it might be a little early in the process, but any of you thought about that or like inspired by, you know, the classes you've taken to maybe pursue it later, or like in terms of careers, or?
Maybe as a hobby. But I'm not sure if I would want to necessarily pursue it as a career.
Sure. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thank you very much. Appreciate Ms. Bizidlow and Mrs. LeBlanc highlighting some of these excellent opportunities we're providing to students. Thank you to Ally and Emily and Anya for explaining what they're doing and representing their classmates and doing that so well and sharing your art. It's really art, essentially, what you're creating. And that's really impressive. And even if it's something that may be a hobby, I think you will find, you know, there's certainly times that I find myself wanting or needing help with trying to put something together that's going to be attractive visually, that you're trying to communicate. So whatever you end up doing in the future, there will be opportunities for you to utilize things like, whether it's Photoshop or similar types of things or photography. It's a really valuable skill to have some baseline understanding of now, more so than your typical person as a result of taking the class, which is very exciting to me. As a token, we typically would have you come shake people's hands and be congratulated. We're not going to do that because of our situation with the pandemic, but I do have three certificates here, signed by Mr. Wensky and myself, thanking you for coming and presenting this evening. So I'll bring this over to you now. And again, thanks very much for being here today. Ally, this is for you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So much. Appreciate it. All right. Move on to the next item on our agenda, which is also a timed scheduled appointment. It's a report from the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee. Under Massachusetts Education Reform Act, school districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern to the student body. And they're here tonight. So if you would please introduce yourself and look forward to the report.
Sure. Hello, my name is Nikita Rahm. I am a senior, and I'm the Chairperson of the Student Advisory Committee. Thank you so much for having us here today to share our agenda. My fellow members will now go down the line and introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Anushka Mukapadhyay, and I'm a senior.
Hi, my name is Risha Perik, and I'm a senior.
Hi, my name is Shalini Bijou, and I'm a junior.
Fundraisers. Students at Shrewsbury High School are happy to give back to their school and community.
Supplies Drive. From December 7th to 11th, the annual Spirit of Giving Drive was held. Students donated a variety of items from dish soap, diapers, paper towels, to tissues, deodorant, and laundry detergent. Around 200 items were donated, and the senior class won the most amount of points for the cup. All items were donated to St. Anne's.
Toys for Tots. From December 3rd through December 10th, the Helping Hands Club of SHS sponsored the Toys for Tots Drive aimed at giving to others who are less fortunate. Students were instructed to bring unused toys to the main office where they would be entered in a gift raffle to show appreciation for their kindness. In the end, over 100 toys were donated to the Worcester collection site of Toys for Tots.
Grafton Street School Elementary Clothes Drive. In early January, the Service Learning Advisory Board, led by Mrs. Satterfield, held a fundraiser to collect brand-new winter clothes items for students at the Grafton Street School in Worcester. Shrewsbury High School was extremely generous, and the school was able to collect over 200 new items. These items included 88 hats and gloves, 21 winter coats, 11 sweatshirts and sweatpants, seven pairs of boots, and 14 miscellaneous winter clothes items.
Blitz Day. On November 23rd, the annual Blitz Day was held from 7:00 to 7:30 a.m. This was a class club event, and the theme was soapy supplies. Students donated many soapy items such as dish soap, hand soap, and soap bars. Overall, 198 items were donated. Juniors came in first place with a total of 62 items donated. Sophomores donated 57, seniors donated 40, and freshmen donated 39. All items were donated to St. Anne's along with the items from the Thanksgiving Supply Drive, held a week before from November 16th to 22nd.
Class of 2022 fundraisers. The senior class of 2022 is utilizing a variety of fundraisers in order to raise money for their senior events. They had a fundraiser at Muya in Northborough on January 22nd, where 20% of the proceeds went to the class of 2022. Furthermore, they have also been selling parking spaces and ruffling off gift baskets. We admire their drive and wish them the best of luck in the remainder of their senior year.
Student Life. Outside of schoolwork, student minds are occupied by the rise in positive COVID cases and regulations within the school. Student General Feelings. For this topic, as a committee, we believe that it would be helpful to give personal insight from all of us members of how students are generally feeling at SHS. We will go down the line and highlight some key topics. I think that right now, SHS is doing a really great job at adapting to the standard COVID restrictions while also bringing back events that, as seniors, we remember from freshman year. One in particular would be the dodgeball tournament. I also noticed that students are generally feeling excited I also noticed that students are generally feeling excited that they're able to support our athletic programs in person and be able to feel like they can come together as a community.
Seniors are generally feeling more relaxed and happy due to a successful ending of first semester and college applications. They are very hopeful and excited for senior events such as prom and graduation to end off their senior year.
I believe that the energy at the school is as good as ever and I feel well supported by my friends and teachers. Recently, the school implemented hall passes when leaving the classroom to mitigate overcrowdedness in restrooms and have less students out of class at times. While the overall intention is understood, some students feel that this process is tedious and disrupts class time, while others don't mind the passes and feel neutral about it.
This is the first year juniors are experiencing a full, almost normal year of high school. Although juniors have had a particularly difficult time readjusting to normal expectations in arguably the most difficult academic year, they have handled it well. The absence of midterm exams has definitely eased the transition back to school and we are appreciative of the support from our understanding teachers and staff members. COVID update. SHS has experienced a significant rise in positive COVID cases following students return to school from December vacation. In the past two weeks, more than 250 positive student and staff COVID cases have been recorded and contact tracing has been paused due to the current inability to do thorough tracing. Some students have expressed concern about the high transmissibility of the Omicron variant and number of cases in the school, focusing especially on the lack of social distancing at lunches. However, the clear downward trend over the past few weeks have been encouraging. As of right now, no changes has been made to school policy regarding social distancing.
Dress code. Recently, some students at SHS took up an issue with the dress code. Some of the students felt that the dress code was directed towards girls rather than boys and felt that this was unfair. Additionally, some students were upset with the locker room talk given in gym class where the girls were told to wear more appropriate clothing so they would not be a distraction. A protest the dress code day was held where all genders wore clothing that broke the dress code, hoping that this would raise awareness of the issue to administration.
School spirit. Our students have always been incredibly proud to bleed blue and gold in school spirit. Chill Out Spirit Week. The Student Council planned a creative week to showcase our colonial pride before December break with a Chill Out Spirit Week. Students were encouraged to dress up and have a little fun before we all went on break. The week started off with Flannel Day on Monday and Ugly Sweater Day on Tuesday. Students brought their favorite items to hold their schoolwork for anything but a backpack day. Some highlights included microwaves, strollers, and pillowcases on Wednesday, and we ended the shortened week with Pajama Day on Thursday. The student participation in the Spirit Week was incredible and truly exemplified the unmatched community we have at SHS. The current standings for the Class Cup is seniors in first, sophomores in second, juniors in third, and freshmen in fourth.
Fall play. Live concerts and theater are back. Students in the Performing Arts Program have impressed audiences with concerts in a Broadway-like performance of The Scarlet Letter on Friday, November 12th and Saturday, November 13th. This one-hour show captivated audiences and garnered an amazing turnout. This was a class cup event with the sophomores coming in first place, the freshmen in second, the juniors in third, and the seniors in fourth. We are looking forward to the Spring Musical from the SHS Performing Arts Department.
Dodgeball Tournament. On November 22nd of 2021, around 30 teams of eight to 10 students competed in Shrewsbury High School's Dodgeball Tournament, an event back, brought back after two years. Along with those participants are student volunteers that helped the tournament run smoothly and an excellent turnout of fans that filled up the stands. This is an extremely successful event in bringing our school together as one and will definitely make a return in the years to come.
Esports. Esports had a very successful winter season with both our Rocket League and League of Legends teams winning the state championship. The team is now progressing to season seven and have added a varsity Super Smash Bros. Ultimate Team to their lineup. Esports cannot wait to meet their new members for their upcoming season and work together to, for another win for SHS.
Winter sports. Following in a highly competitive fall season, winter sports have picked up right where SHS left off. All teams across the board are competing at the highest level and have done their part to ensure no pauses in their seasons due to COVID. Fan attendance has been on and off due to this recent spike in COVID. However, as of January 31st, fans are back at home games and most away games. It is always a privilege to have fans come support our teams and it's even better when the turnout is great, especially at the boys varsys ice hockey 6-5 thriller win over our crosstown rivals, St. John's. With the postseason approaching for many teams, we encourage the continued support for our student athletes and are excited to see what they accomplish.
Thank you for your continuous support of the SAC.
Great, thank you for the report. Appreciate it. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Ritz?
I have a question about the hall pass. Can you clarify what that is? I didn't follow what that was when you were talking about it.
Sure. So when a student wants to maybe go to the restroom or leave the classroom to do whatever they need to do, they're required to fill out a hall pass which requires their signature, the date, and where they're heading, and then also a teacher's signature. And then following that, they must go to the sign-out sheet towards the door of the classroom, sign out there. And then, um, once they return, they must, uh, like bring the slip back. And so that whole process, uh, as I mentioned, like some people think it disrupts class with the teacher signing it. Some people are okay with it and it's just been something that's been talked of at school.
Okay, so it still exists?
It does, yeah.
Okay, all right, because I knew it's been there for a long time. So I couldn't follow if it was something that was going away, but it's still there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Heffernan?
Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. I love hearing about all of the various activities that are sort of back in full, full swing and Spirit Week and Dodgeball and performances. Somewhere in there, I heard a, a piece important about academics and I thought I heard there was an absence of midterm exams. And so can you talk to me a little bit about that change? And I've heard through the grapevine of a failing member at the high school, some homework-free weekends and some other things. Maybe you can just help me understand some of the balancing act that's going on between with, on that academic side?
Um, yeah, so as a junior, I think it has been a little bit difficult for juniors because this is the first like full year that we're in school under relatively normal conditions. Um, so we did not have to take midterm exams this year. We did have to take them my freshman year. And I think just having the absence of midterm exams has like taken a lot of stress out and has also helped with our like academic transition in. Um, in terms of homework-free weekends, I think that also has helped out a lot. It's usually like before breaks or before long weekends, um, most of our classes with the exception of AP classes aren't supposed to give homework. And I think that also has helped me a lot personally because I think that took off a lot of stress.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, well, thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer. Any further comments?
I'd like to thank the SAC as always for updating the, the school committee and the community, uh, and things that are happening. I, I concur that, uh, things feel different this year and better in the sense of people feeling a more of a sense of relief. We're fortunate that we have an environment where we have a high level of vaccination. I think that reduced some of the fear factor that went with COVID. Uh, you know, obviously people, as you mentioned, uh, became more alarmed after the, uh, break when the cases, and I'll be reporting, doing the regular report right after this about our case counts and so forth. Uh, but we've been fortunate that it seems like those who have, uh, tested positive for the virus are not experiencing particularly negative, uh, health effects and, and we're obviously hopeful, always hopeful that that continues to be the case. Uh, I think in, you know, whether at times I've visited the high school or been at different events, you know, other than the fact that people are wearing masks, it would be hard to know that we're in a pandemic. And, and that's exactly what we're hoping for. We want that more sense of normalcy, uh, making social connections because that it's so critically important for our adolescents to be able to do all of those things. And I, I think you could, you could sense some of the enthusiasm in the presentation about bringing back some of these things that we've missed now for a couple of years and are important for us to continue to, to provide to students. So, thank you. We appreciate the, the feedback and appreciate your leadership.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And also, thank you to your faculty advisor well, as well, Ms. Randy Smith. Always has the students well prepared for this. So thank you so much and appreciate the, the report. So thank you so much. All right. Next item on our agenda is also a timed scheduled appointment. It is a report regarding the district response to the pandemic. And with that, I'll head it back to Dr. Sawyer.
Right, so let me just get this connected. All right. So this is the, uh, regular report that we've been providing and, uh, this is, for those who've been watching, you know that our, uh, we've stated each time that our primary goal this year is to provide full-time in-person learning, uh, for students with minimal disruptions and to do so using a variety of mitigation strategies to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19 at school. Our approach is implementing those mitigation strategies, paying attention to students' social and emotional mental health needs by creating as much of a sense of belonging as we can. I think you just heard some good examples of ways that our high school is doing that. Um, and providing learning opportunities that support students' academic needs as well. The numbers, uh, in terms of the positivity rate across the state have come down substantially since the last time I reported to you. Massachusetts is back where it typically has been, is one of the lower positivity rates in, in among the, the 50 states. And I added a slide here, thanks to Blake Stewart who helps us with this each week in our office, that just shows how this number moved from the last few school committee reports up until today. Um, so by mid-December, it had peaked up to about a little over 5% after having been much lower than that over the course of the fall. It really spiked, of course, right after the, uh, December break. Uh, since then, it's come down substantially about a third of what it was, uh, in early January. So that's good news. In terms of state statistics, um, you can see by age bracket, uh, the number's still higher than they certainly were in the fall, but have been, uh, generally coming down. Ages zero to nine in terms of, uh, cases, around 24,000, uh, plus compared to 29,000 the last report two weeks ago. And, uh, more substantially even among ages 10 to 19, uh, we're down from 36,000 to about 26,000. In terms of hospital admission rates, uh, younger people still are much, much less likely to be admitted to the hospital as a result of contracting COVID. Uh, we know, of course, hospitalizations are even, uh, more dramatically, uh, uh, an issue in terms of outcomes relative to vaccination rates and that helps as well. You can see that compared to the previous report on January 13th, the numbers have come down a little bit for zero to 11 years. For 12 to 17, uh, have come, have gone up a little bit actually. Um, and then, uh, for 18 and 19-year-olds, it's come down from about 19 per 100,000 to 14. But again, these are numbers per 100,000. These are very small numbers when it comes to youth hospitalizations, uh, due to COVID. Locally, you can see the case count. Uh, this is a little bit of a tricky statistic now because a lot of the positive cases we're reporting are reported to us because of rapid tests that are happening at home. Uh, the town number is only reporting those that have come officially through a lab because of an official test, typically a PCR test, but even a rapid test taken out of doctor's office would get reported. But those home tests are not reported through the, to the town of Shrewsbury official numbers. Um, so the, the proportion would be, uh, a, a different ratio if, if all of the towns' rapid tests were being reported as ours are. Uh, but again, the numbers are trending obviously in the right direction. On a percentage basis, last week we had a little over 1.8% of our, uh, students who tested positive. Um, and this week so far, it's about three-quarters of 1%. Uh, the 14-day positive test rate the state reports for Shrewsbury, and this, uh, lags a little bit, so this is through January 22nd. It was at about 16%. Um, given the seven-day rate in Massachusetts, I would expect when I report back to you two weeks from now that that number will be substantially lower. As far as the actual case count, uh, this week so far, we've had 44 cases. Our total cases since the start of the school year, um, just over 1,700. About 1,050 of those were actually in school during their infectious period. And, uh, we had ca, traced 100 cases specifically to possible or probable exposure in school. Uh, but as we mentioned last time, uh, in January, we did pause, uh, case-specific contact tracing just due to the volume of cases we had, making that impossible essentially, as well as the shift in approach that's focusing on testing symptomatic people as opposed to those who were, uh, a close contact of someone who was in school during their infectious period. Uh, we do presume that there is some level of in-school transmission that's occurring. Uh, but, uh, case reviews that we've seen have not seen any clusters or outbreaks in particular cases where we are able to connect it. It's usually, uh, one person to one other person or a couple of people, uh, where, where we do see that happening. Uh, but obviously with the overall cases coming down, again, we are very confident that even though we certainly have individuals every day in our schools who are positive for COVID, some of whom we find out about, some who will never know, uh, we are not seeing them, you know, if this were a quote-unquote "super-spreader" situation, you'd see, you know, one case being multiplied over and over again and numbers would be going up, not down. And the numbers are continuing to come down, which again is good news. As far as cases in vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals among students, about half have been in vaccinated students at this point, uh, of the over 1,400 student cases. Of course, over time, now that our younger students have been eligible for vaccination, more and more of our student population is vaccinated. Um, and so, uh, you know, that's, that's a proportionally, uh, a little bit different or moving in that direction. Uh, as far as staff cases, the vast majority of our staff are vaccinated, over 95%. Um, and, uh, right now, 84% have been vaccinated of our cases and 12%, uh, which is a much larger proportion of our staff of those who are unvaccinated who have actually contracted, uh, COVID. For a total of 264. Just a reminder, we do publish our data dashboard every Monday. Uh, that's right in the prominent link that is on our homepage if people are interested each week. This graph shows on a day-by-day basis, you can see the visual of, you know, where cases were over the course of the fall. Big, big spikes after the, leading up to and after, uh, the December break and then, uh, recently coming down pretty substantially. Uh, that's easier to see on a week-by-week basis. Uh, you can see the very significant increase in early January uh, and then dramatically coming down since then. If that trend continues, we would hope that that number would be halved again or so by next, uh, week and then hopefully after that, we're back to numbers that we were seeing more in the fall. Obviously, it remains to be seen, but it's a very promising trend. This is the number of cases by school. Again, the high school being our largest school, uh, makes sense that that's where our largest number is. Uh, but you can just have a sense, if you're interested in your own, uh, school community, what the numbers are at this point. Uh, but then when you look at it by grade level, um, you can see that our, our highest sort of overall four-grade numbers are across grades three through six, um, with another relatively high number in grade eight and then some high numbers particularly in, uh, it used to be that grade 12 was the leader, but it, uh, fifth grade and third grade have since eclipsed them. Uh, so that's, uh, of interest. Uh, but this is something that, uh, you know, we look at, sort of what the age distribution is. This again just visually shows the difference between the number of student cases and staff cases so far as of the end of last week. As far as vaccination data, uh, these numbers, the numbers for 12 to 15 and 16 to 19-year-olds as far as being fully vaccinated are pretty similar, stitched up maybe one or two percent among the 12 to 15-year-old population. Both over 90%, which is a strong. Uh, the number has moved up as far as first doses for 5 to 11 and fully vaccinated, uh, at 68 and 53% respectively. Also, much higher number of boosters than we saw a couple of weeks ago among 12 to 15-year-olds, which I also appreciate seeing. Uh, so as of right now, about half of our 16 to 19-year-olds in the, and this, these are town of Shrewsbury counts. This is all students that age or all, all people that age in the cost of town. Um, significant majority of those, of course, are in our school district. Uh, but about half have been boosted, age 16 to 19, and right now about 20% have been boosted, age 12 to 15. Um, and, uh, it'll be interesting to see if those numbers continue to trend upwards. Uh, this is data that, uh, Noel Freeman, uh, provided, uh, that, uh, was able to, uh, indicate on a grade-by-grade basis. And, uh, the best data we have in our system is, is, is firm around one dose, so that's what we're showing here. Um, so you can see those numbers now in grades, uh, uh, pre-K through four. And then five through 12. Obviously, the numbers get higher, um, as the, those age groups that have been eligible for a long time now. This is the comparison chart we've been showing to surrounding communities. Compared to, uh, our neighbors in, in Westborough and Southborough, they have, uh, stronger percentages when it comes to, uh, fully vaccinated individuals and certainly in the newer 5 to 11-year-old category, um, far beyond where we're at on a percentage basis. Northborough as well, uh, Boylston and Grafton are, uh, similar, maybe a little behind where we are in terms of percentages. So that's just a comparison to some other local communities that we border. Shifting gears to talking about our, our different testing programs. Uh, the Test and Stay program has been discontinued. Uh, we, we're working with the state in a different approach now for symptomatic testing. It's replaced that as well as at-home rapid antigen surveillance testing. So the final stats on the Test and Stay program, that we, uh, had over 2,100 people participate, over 5,200 tests. Less than 1% of those were positive, which again was another very, very important signal that students who were literally in close contact with a positive case that was at school in their infectious period, 99-plus percent of the time, they did not test positive for COVID. Um, and these were, and this testing was available to unvaccinated individuals. So the risk, uh, or the likelihood of COVID was actually higher as well. Uh, that saved over 5,100 student learning days, uh, because this enabled them to not be subject to the quarantine rules of needing to stay out of school. Uh, and that, that's, uh, was a very, very important element and it was a very successful program along those lines. In terms of our testing for individuals who do have COVID symptoms, the centralized testing site on, on Maple Avenue at the, uh, athletic fields, uh, near the center of town is, uh, now been shifted instead of doing Test and Stay, that's where, uh, either students or staff who are symptomatic and those are symptoms that could be COVID, uh, they are approved by our school nurse team. Um, and there, there's pretty rare that someone's not approved, uh, that they will be able to go and, uh, you know, fill out a consent form and then have that testing completed. Uh, we began then on January 18th. So far, we've had 145 individuals take advantage of this. Of them, 41 were positive. It's a 28% rate. One would expect to see a higher percentage, of course, is the people who are experiencing symptoms that could be COVID. The email address is there that people can send an email to if they have a question, uh, or if they're requesting, uh, this. They should also send that email to their school nurse as well. Our routine safety testing, also known as surveillance or pooled testing. Uh, we continue to have about 25% of our students and staff participate. So far this year, we've, uh, processed over 25,000 samples. Uh, that is, uh, what you see here. I don't believe when I applied to be a superintendent, I talked about bringing specimen bags to school committee meetings. I'd have to say biohazard on them, but that is the reality we're living with. Uh, but this is the kit, uh, staff or students get. Uh, there's a swab, a test tube, and, uh, package it back up. You scan it and, uh, bring it in the next day and drop it off and it gets, goes to the lab and gets tested. Uh, turnaround time is not as fast as we'd like it to be. It's just a reality of the volume the labs are dealing with and, and the program. Uh, usually, these are turned in on Tuesday. Uh, we usually get results, start to get results Thursday afternoon into Thursday evening. Sometimes they trail into Friday depending on how many, you know, at the height of Omicron, there was of course a lot of positive pools they had to do reflex testing on. Uh, but again, it's been a way to provide some peace of mind. Um, below 1% of those, um, tests that have been coming up, uh, uh, sent to the lab have come back positive. Uh, last week, 27, which is a higher number than, you know, prior to Omicron, but that's been coming down a bit. That was only 1.6% of the tests, uh, that week. Um, at-home antigen testing, uh, every other week. Staff or students now, today was the first day we distributed students, get a box that has two, uh, at-home rapid tests uh, that we are asking people to take that evening, uh, and then save the other one for the next week. And then two weeks later, they'll get another box with two kits. Again, this was announced on January 18th. Staff and families had to opt into it, which was a separate consent because it's a separate program and legally we needed to do that according to the state program. And, uh, the at-home, uh, kits, uh, staff received them last week, students received them today. Uh, I know today was, was an imperfect process because it's the first time we did it and, uh, you know, on a volume basis. I will have a stat next to you, how many people are taking advantage of this. I know for staff, it was about 600 who had signed up, which is out of about, you know, over 1,000 total, but as far as our day-to-day in-school staff, it's a pretty good percentage. So that was, I was pleased to see that. There's an agreement that you sign that if you do test positive, you need to report that to the school nurse so that we can work with people around their situation. But it is another layer of being able to identify, using a tool to identify positive cases, and again, try to minimize spread wherever possible, and at the same time, provide peace of mind that people who might be concerned or nervous, this is an opportunity each week as well. Good news on the absence front. Our overall absenteeism rate went from about 12.5% during the first week of January, which is very high for us, down to about 5% last week. And as of today, it was 3.5%, which is excellent for this time of year generally, anytime, even not during the pandemic. As far as, you can just see over time, those are the numbers in January on a day-to-day basis. That's the trend we wanted to see. And then for staff absences, you know, it went from about 10% right after the break due to COVID, about 6 and 3/4 last week. So far this week, almost 4.5%. So again, trending in the right direction. The proportion of those absenteeis, absentees due to COVID has also dropped significantly from about half of the staff absences right after the break to less than 1/5 of the staff absences being actually due to someone being positive for COVID. And you can see those numbers. The blue is just the total absences across the district on that individual day, and then the red is their absence due to being positive for COVID. I will conclude by, again, emphasizing why it's so important that we keep our schools open. Obviously, we have, continue to have concerns about our students' mental health and social, emotional well-being and academic progress. We need to obviously be very considerate of the risks that COVID-19 poses, as well as things like influenza, especially to folks who are immunocompromised. And given the high levels of vaccination, less of a chance for poor outcomes for children. Current number of student and staff hospitalized this year remains at one staff member, who thankfully was only in for a couple, three days. And that, so we're not seeing any kind of significant numbers with those kinds of needs to actually be hospitalized, which is encouraging, of course. We continue to have significant impacts relative to a mental health crisis among our young people. From our perspective, this makes keeping our schools open and having kept them open even through the Omicron wave critically important. And of course, some of those situations are identified through being at school, not only from outside in the family environment. Additionally, you know, we know remote learning is a huge disruption to the lives of students and families. And that, of course, although, you know, the reason we exist is to teach and help students learn, schools also are a big part of society's infrastructure in terms of providing a safe place for children to be while their parents are at work. And that includes the healthcare system. But this is in the context of things that are certainly getting better and looking up, where we continue to consult with our medical experts. And, you know, as we, as the numbers, if they continue to go in the direction they are and come back down to where they were in the fall, that will certainly mean that we need to begin having conversations. We've already had some behind the scenes around, sort of, what's this look like moving forward the rest of the winter and into the spring in terms of mitigation strategies and what is being said. We know that there are, you know, medication is being ramped up in terms of folks who are positive for COVID that will help reduce hospitalizations further. That's not quite where it needs to be, is my understanding, in terms of availability of that, of those drugs. But that will be another toolbox, a tool in the toolkit. And, you know, it'll be, we're obviously hoping that we don't see another troublesome variant come along in the meantime. So with that, again, we're looking to maintain our full-time in-school learning. I am deeply appreciative of the support we're getting from families. Our students have been phenomenal. And I cannot say enough about what our staff are doing on a day-to-day basis to help our students move through what is still a difficult and challenging time. It's affected different students and different families in different ways. But I believe the flexibility and grace that our educators and support staff and administrators are trying to provide, while at the same time, making sure we're setting boundaries and helping folks adjust to what's necessary to have a productive and positive school environment. It is complex this year, but we have a wonderfully talented and committed staff who are doing really hard work to make that happen for our kids. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Swer. Colleagues, any questions? Sepphenin?
Yeah, I want to thank you, Dr. Swer, for continuing to provide just a lot of transparency about where we are. And I also just want to think back for a moment to where we were a year ago now. And I, as people listen, they know, I have three kids in the district and have, you know, have experienced the pandemic in different sort of ways. And in the last week, my kids have come home to tell, talk to me about, you know, running a constitutional convention in their social studies class in eighth grade, and a building catapults in third grade and, you know, ninth, you know, the nine times tables. And we're talking about their education again, in a way where we're not talking about, what's it like being hybrid? And did you submit the thing in power school, which the parents, I know we were terrible at supporting, figuring that out. And I think a lot of that is due to all of these different measures that are in place. And this next step of antigen tests, going home to families, while you were talking, I texted my spouse and said, "Don't forget, take them out of the backpack, get those done." And so, that, you know, that we all play a role in kind of getting the kids back to where they are. And so, I obviously only have insight to the couple of teachers that I know, but I am pretty confident that's happening all across, all across the district as teachers are trying really hard to engage kids amidst high absences rates and amidst, you know, not having the, you know, the substitute levels that we would like and all these, and all these other things. But I am just incredibly impressed by how willing the kids are to move forward, but also the reality that we have of the mental health crisis that is going on in this community as we speak, speaks to me of the necessity of putting, keeping all of these things in place, being as diligent as we can, all to get kids back to doing what they need to do. So I just want to applaud the district for all of those steps. And I continue to hope that parents and families will really engage and take advantage of those opportunities so that we can keep the kids doing constitutional conventions and other such important things because that's, that's what they should be focused on. So thank you for all the efforts, Dr. Swer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Mr. Palich?
I also want to echo Ms. Sepphenin's comments, just thanking you for the reports and the transparency. I think it's been very key to the broadly positive feedback we continue to receive from our school community. Just two questions on the at-home antigen testing. Just curious if you can elaborate a little bit on how the distribution was handled. And also, just curious, do the students, upon receiving the two tests per week, do they take them on a designated schedule? Or is it just to have them at any particular point that they, that they wanted to during the week? Is there, is there a consistency to that?
Yeah, no, thank you. I should have been more specific about that. And first off, I'd be remiss if I did not thank April Yu, our Assistant Director of Finance and Operations, Noel Freeman, our Director of School Nursing, Patrick Collins, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, who took this new program and really ramped it up very quickly. Our Building Secretary has played a key role in this as well, in terms of distribution. Today, and I don't know all the details of it, my understanding is, you know, certainly we had lists of people who had given, parents who had given permission for students to get these. And then depending on the age of the student, high school students were able to go to a table. And working with our partners through CIC, and there's a group that subcontractor meet the caregivers who are running our testing center in the center of town, they're also assisting with this test distribution. They were able to, students could go over in the cafeteria at lunchtime at the high school, give their name, they would find their, you know, check them off and hand them a kit. We are asking, and similar for staff, they just got it at the school office on their way out the door last Wednesday. We are asking people to test, one test the afternoon or evening after they get home from school, the day they receive it, and then do it again a week later. So we're looking at to sort of space this between the Monday testing that we do for the pooled testing. And then right now, the day is Wednesday. There's a possibility we might shift that to Thursday, but that's going to depend on just the cycle of deliveries we're getting from the state of these. And so we'll firm that up in the next week or two after we've gone through this first cycle. But we do ask, sort of midweek, when they receive it on Wednesday, take one of them, a week later, take the other, and that's, that will be the cycle that we'll be on, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further questions or comments? Thank you, as always, for the report. I do appreciate all the mitigation steps that we've taken this year. I really feel it's, it's led to, you know, really accomplishing that primary goal of keeping kids in the classroom. Just, you know, my daughter actually participated in the antigen test pickup today after the opt-in, pretty seamless process, picked up her kits. And she was actually excited about it, I guess. That's what, that's where we are in these times, so. But yeah, thank you, as always, for the report. And any further comments or?
No, I think we're good.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, on to the next item on our agenda, which was scheduled for a state-of-the-district report. Recommendation of Dr. Swer, we're actually going to move that to our February 16th meeting. Just felt it was better suited for that time. So we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is under policy. It's a discussion regarding the school district calendar for 2022-2023 school year. And Dr. Swer will summarize recommendations for the next school year and answer any questions from the committee. And the draft calendar was posted for public comment in advance of requested votes on the February 16th meeting, which is in a couple of weeks. So I can kick things off, just hand it back to Dr. Swer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. The in-your packet is a recommended calendar for the next school year. This is typical about the time of year when we ask the committee to review this and then take a vote at your subsequent meeting, as you just mentioned. Just to give some context, you know, first and foremost, it follows state law relative to not holding school on legal holidays in Massachusetts. The same approach is used for scheduling vacation periods as we have in recent years, which is structured according to the recommendations that were made back in January 2016 by a calendar committee that was composed of both parents and staff. This year, we are proposing for next year, I should say, returning to the approach we would typically use at the start of the school year. This current year, we did something a little bit different. We wanted to front-load our two professional development days before students came to school, just with all the different issues going on with adjusting to the pandemic. But we are recommending for next year, we go back to having the first day of staff be the Monday prior to Labor Day, which next year will be August 29th. This year's August 29th, next school year, followed by the first day of schools for students being August 30th, that Tuesday. Students would attend Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then hold our professional development day that Friday, September 2nd, which is the Friday prior to Labor Day weekend. The other piece I would note that's a little bit of a different than some years, and, you know, different years, we have different configurations for the December vacation, depending on when the holidays fall. In terms of this next year, this year, we went through, I believe it was a Friday this year, December 23rd. There were a number of other local districts did not go to school that day. We also saw a very significant percentage of student absences that day this year. And our principals recommend that we not have school on December 23rd this coming year, given where it falls again, in order to not have a day where we have that kind of challenging attendance, which makes it challenging to, you know, instruct students and move things forward. And also because several other communities also have already set their calendars, communities where we have a lot of staff who live. And so if their children are out of school, it creates obviously issues for them in terms of childcare if we're in session. So for those reasons, I believe it makes sense to start the vacation on December 23rd. And this year, returning on January 3rd because New Year's Day falls on a Sunday, which means legally it's observed on the Monday, January 2nd. This draft calendar also has our 180th school day, which is the number of days in our school calendar for students and the minimum required by state law. The last day will be Thursday, June 15th. Just a reminder to folks that a relatively new state holiday is Juneteenth, Independence Day, and that must be observed on Monday, June 19th. That's the date it will be celebrated each year. It's the 19th each year on the Monday. If it's on a Sunday, as in this coming year, this is going to, and you know what, I'm thinking that, that should have said 2023. So I will correct the record when I send that out. So I'm looking at the 2023 at this point. If we have snow days, then that will affect. If we have no snow days for the year, Juneteenth will fall during summer vacation. But if we have snow days that move us in there, we will not hold school on that date. And then the final piece in the memorandum you have in your packet is that the calendar, last, this past year, acknowledged in addition to the official state holiday of Columbus Day, also recognized that this has become widely known as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that is something that was added to the calendar this year. It includes both the legal name of the holiday under Massachusetts law that requires schools to be closed on that day, but also recognizing that Indigenous Peoples' Day has become a more widely accepted and known holiday that honors the Native Peoples of America and commemorates their history. And given our school district's effort to increase the sense of belonging and inclusivity for our students and families and staff, last year, I recommended we add that language, and the school committee concurred. This past October, those watching, the school committee is aware, of course, but to let those watching know that the school committee did receive a petition asking that the school district calendar only reference Indigenous Peoples' Day and not cite Columbus Day at all. The text of that petition is in the memo. I won't read it out loud. It was signed by 114 individuals connected to the Shrewsbury community in some way that included students, alumni, current and former SPS parents, and residents. And again, this memo will be posted on our website tomorrow, like all the other documents that we have are connected with a school committee meeting. And so certainly, I believe, and I'm sure the school committee does, that it's important to acknowledge that you received that feedback and that petition, and that their arguments put forth are considered as you consider your deliberations about the school calendar. The draft calendar that is in your packet continues the status quo practice begun last year. But in a general sense, I think some questions that are important to consider, you know, really revolve around the idea that sort of Columbus Day does remain an official state holiday. That's the legal reason schools are closed. And there is a question that was raised in the petition about whether listing that holiday somehow puts, indicates the district's taking a particular stance on how Columbus Day is taught to our students. And, you know, we know that it's a controversial topic, certainly among, among some. You know, the other question I think to consider is whether removing this name of the state holiday would signal that if, you know, kind of a, one aspect of an official state law is something that we can choose not to recognize, but we recognize others, what, that's a, could be interpreted in a certain way by some folks. And then finally, again, the question about, you know, what is it that we're teaching? How are students understanding the issues surrounding Christopher Columbus, Indigenous Peoples', history here in the United States, what's now the United States? And what does that mean in terms of the title of a holiday on a calendar versus the curriculum and what happens in classrooms? So it is, as inarticulate as I just was trying to frame those things, you know, that there is, you know, different issues that swirl around this, this piece, but that were raised by, you know, a number of constituents. And it's important to recognize that they have these concerns. So personally, you know, I will make a recommendation in advance of your meeting two weeks from tonight, where you will, are scheduled to vote. But I felt it was important to raise the issue this evening and hear any feedback that the committee has at this time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any feedback the committee has.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Swer. Colleagues, questions, comments? Or discussion regarding the calendar?
Yeah, I just have a question on, or not a question, a comment on October 7th. That Friday, it's a Friday, and then the following Monday for Columbus Day. One concern I have, and it has come up with the calendar review committee the last time we did it, that some families like to have that because it gives the opportunity to have a longer weekend. But I think there's also a concern with working families that sometimes you cannot take a Friday and a Monday. It's difficult for working parents who may have limited time to take it around a Friday and a Monday. It's two very close days together to ask for vacation time. So I think that definitely needs to be considered. And I think the issue that we had this year with the time before Christmas where more students were out is a possibility on the 6th because people will take the 6th off, pull their kids out, and have a longer five days, a block of time. So I, I think we have to be considerate of working families when having a Friday and a Monday. So I I think we have to be considerate of working families when having a Friday and a Monday. And I prefer my personal to have, we already have one in September, not to have a second one so quick in October.
Any further comments or discussion, Ms. Heffernan?
I appreciate those comments, Andy, it's a slightly different frame than I have been thinking about and had often heard families talking about that, appreciating the, that the extra day not be sort of a somewhat more random day in the middle of a week, which sometimes is difficult is difficult to judge, but something that they they can plan for, obviously that that can be ameliorated by just putting our calendar out well in advance and people paying attention. But I think we've gotten into a bit of a habit on the Labor Day and then, you know, the September and October, October patterns. But I appreciate the the perspective there. I think some some certainly seem to appreciate the Friday or the Monday or Friday, so make make a weekend a little longer. But had not personally heard that that concern, that's interesting to hear that raised. And I just would would say, Dr. Sauer overarching the other recommended relatively minor changes, I'm certainly supportive of, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness around around the issue of naming and naming of holidays. And I look forward to hearing if there's comments from the from the public at large for us to consider over the next couple of weeks, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I should clarify too, one of the other comments I have around that is because many private employers don't have Columbus Day, Veterans Day off. So that is a, you know, a day that families have to take. So that was the other issue where it's it's not, you know, for them, a traditional day off, so it just adds to that burden for some, mostly working families.
Any further discussion, comments, Dr. Sauer, any?
No, I appreciate that, again, I would, we will post this on the website tomorrow under the school committee meeting materials link. And obviously, as Seppert had mentioned, if there's feedback people have in advance of the vote to that's scheduled for two weeks from tonight, that would be always welcome. The other piece I just want to mention as well is that we are in the midst of negotiations with the SEA Unit A, essentially Professional Educators Teachers Association. And, you know, some elements of the calendar can be affected by teacher's contract. Don't expect any major changes to things like the start of the school year or anything like that, but there could be elements that at a later date need to be adjusted as a result of those negotiations. But other than that, we'll look forward to bringing forward recommendation to you two weeks from tonight.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes, minutes from school committee meeting held on January nineteenth was provided. Any edits or revisions, there being none, that'll be accepted as written. And we do need to adjourn into executive session tonight, so I do need a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purposes of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair. So declares purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, purpose two. And for the purpose of reviewing and acting upon a student residency issue where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call vote is required, Mr. Palance?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you and good night.